Tonight, February 3rd, assessment hearing for Birch Narrows. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Reese.
Sorry, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Reese.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I'm Dave Reese with Witza Smith-Nolting, the project engineer for the Birch Narrows Road Improvements and the 2021 Street Improvements. Birch Narrows is one of five project areas included in the 2021 Street Improvement Project. So I'll be going through the feasibility report that was prepared for this project area. It's project area number four. When we go through this presentation afterward, I'll ask if the city council has any questions. And after the council has had a chance to ask questions, then we'll ask any folks in the audience here that would like to speak to the council on this project. And then anybody that's on the Zoom would then have an opportunity following that. So if you're on Zoom and listening in, just raise your hand at that point in time and TJ will unmute you so you can speak. So I'll just go through the study here quickly. As I said, this is project area number four out of five. You can see the project areas on this slide. Wildwind Ranch Drive, Harbor Lane, Rushmore Boulevard, Birch Narrows, and Whitefish Avenue are the 2021 projects. The project area consists of the maintained portion of Birch Narrows Road, a portion that's been maintained by the city over several decades. It begins at Highway three and proceeds, as shown on this drawing, to the end to the west. That ends in a broader area of pavement or turnaround area, and there's several driveways that extend off of that, including an easement road that serves additional property off to the southwest. And this slide shows a broader area and also the properties that extend off the end of Birch Narrows Road, at least the maintained portion. The project would consist of what's called a full-depth reclamation of the pavement and base that exists there. This project will grind up the pavement that's there and salvage that material. It'll be used to broaden the base area and provide a platform for additional Class V aggregate base to be placed, and then a new pavement section. Along with that will be a topsoil dressing on the shoulders and seeding. So why are we doing this project? I've gotten a few phone calls and a lot of people have said, well, the road doesn't look that bad. The road itself is one of the older roads in the city's system, going all the way back to in the mid-eighties when this was paved. And it's remarkable that it's lasted as long as it has. It must have some pretty good drained sandy base underneath it, which is good. But there are several cracks in this that have formed over that time. We've got some shoulder areas that are starting to slump off and crack, and you can see some of that in these photos. We've got transfers cracking that's pretty regular on this road. I'm going to back up one slide and grab the pointer here. So right on this first curve, it's a pretty sharp curve, and right on the inside of that, we're continually losing pavement. It's potholed and breaking up over time. That's probably due to wear and tear and maintenance efforts with snow plowing and the vehicles tend to hug the inside of the curves, and so that's where we typically see the pavement starting to break up. Some of the cracks that we're looking at in the photos are getting to be rather deep, and every time we crack seal on this, it's taking more and more material. If you were to drive this road at this time of the year, you would feel those cracks and the depth and width that they have, and it's somewhat similar to Wildwind Ranch Drive that we spoke about just the other night, as far as some of the severity of some of the cracks. Also, the pavement's surface has become oxidized over the years, and although it's probably a little better in some of the shadier spots where the sun's worked on it and the water's worked on it, it's starting to show some of the signs of oxidation and losing some aggregate. We see that with plows when they plow and start to scrape off that top layer. So we do not know what's underneath this road, but I would expect that it's lasted as long as it has because it's sandy material. This shows some of the additional areas of cracking and potholing that the city's been maintaining over the past thirty-plus years. Also, when we looked at this road, some of the deflection that's occurred in the roadway itself, it's lost its crown. Very difficult to get a blade on it to snow plow, and those are the areas that we see that tend to trap water and hold water going through the freeze-thaw cycles, and that's where we see some of this block cracking happening. Usually, you see a crack that's three by three. You're starting to see the deflection that's occurring there, and the plow tends to skip over those areas. So what's being proposed? We're proposing to reclaim the roadway and use those millings to help build a new road base. That will eliminate the reflective cracking that we would see. There's nothing that totally eliminates cracks in pavement. It will happen, but if we were to overlay this road, all the cracks that we just showed in the photos will come back through within a few years. And it also doesn't correct those deflected areas, so you know, without blade leveling or doing something in addition there, we don't feel an overlay would be the correct solution here. We would be adding three inches of Class V aggregate base to this road and two and a half inches of wearing course pavement. That's going to elevate this road surface. There really are not defined ditches. There's some pretty good drainage and slope away from the road edge in most places, but other places where the water can sit right up against the edge of the road. So elevating the road would be a good thing to do. In going through what we've discussed here, in terms of the proposed improvements, we prepared a cost estimate using our best estimate of quantities for typical work items and bid pricing that we've seen over the past year. This includes, the biggest line item would be the blacktop pavement itself, and we've got that at eighty-five dollars per ton. That's elevated from what we were using for estimating in 2020, where no one can really predict what that price will be forthcoming, but we feel that with competitive bids, it may be less than that. Okay? So, and to get that competitive bidding, that's why we're doing all these roads in one bid package and as one contract for the benefit of scale. So the total cost estimate that we prepared for the construction with a ten percent contingency is around two-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand, and the engineering administrative costs and legal costs associated with the assessment process and procedures, including design and construction services, would be just under forty-eight thousand. And so our total project estimate is two-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand. Okay. How is the city approaching assessments on this? The process that's being followed is to look directly at Chapter 429 Special Assessment Statute, which says that we need to look at the benefit that's being provided to properties by virtue of these improvements. And so to determine how each property is benefiting in terms of market value, the city enlisted a licensed appraiser to look at the roadway, look at the properties, look at the types of improvements that are being proposed, and develop a range of benefit for the different types of properties that are out there. And so we have single-family residential, on-lake and off-lake, two different types of properties, and then vacant land. The ranges of benefit are a little bit different in each case, but what the city did is take a look at that range and establish an assessment value of four-thousand dollars of benefit to each property. And that's on the low end of the range for built property, on-lake and off-lake, kind of on the low end of the range for vacant lake frontage, and in the middle of the range for off-lake vacant land. We're looking at a total of thirty-seven properties that would be assessed for this At four-thousand dollars per lot, that would generate one-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand dollars of assessed value, leaving one-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand for the city's share of the project cost. Some of these lots include the lots that are off the end of the project. There's about ten lots that use Birch Narrows Road for access to their property, and by virtue of improving the roadway, there is some benefit there. Past city policy has not been to assess the full amount to non-abutting properties in this scenario, but to assess half the assessment value, which would be two-thousand dollars to those properties. And that would be our recommendation to follow that past policy in this case. Okay. In the order of events and the procedures for this process, we're at the February 3rd hearing on improvement. The next step would be for the city council to consider a resolution ordering the improvement and preparation of plans. Then the project would be put out for bids. We expect that that resolution will be on the city council agenda for this coming Monday, February 8th. And the purpose of the hearing tonight is to receive the residents' testimony and opinions and feelings on the project prior to making that decision on resolution. Going forward, we expect if the city council approves that resolution, that plans would be prepared. This would be publicly bid, and we'd take bids in March, pending an acceptable bid. Construction could feasibly begin after load restrictions are off in the spring. That is usually in May, mid-May at the latest, and then four to six weeks of construction at the contractor's schedule. So typically, we're seeing that construction would begin after Memorial Day weekend and proceed into July typically to be wrapped up. So after that construction, then what we've done in the past is hold a second hearing, the final assessment hearing, where again, people would be sent a notice of the hearing and be able to come before the city council to talk about the assessments if they have any concerns or questions about the final assessment. Then the assessment role would be adopted, and there would be a thirty-day period for residents to pay their assessment in full without incurring any interest. After that thirty-day window, then they would be certified to the county auditor for the tax rolls beginning 2022. The period in interest rate that's normally been used for road projects by the Crosslake City Councils has been a ten-year term, and the interest rate has normally been one to two percent over the borrowing rate that the cities got on the bond. Okay? So that's how we would expect that a tax or the assessment role to be prepared and then submitted and certified to the county auditor. And that usually happens later in the fall. Okay? All right. So that concludes the presentation. Are there any questions from the city council?
I got one question, Dave. You said that road was put in in eighty-five, right?
Yep.
Any overlays since then?
None that I know of, none that I've found in the records.
So it's held up to its degree for thirty-five years?
To the best of our knowledge.
Okay.
I have a question about the non-abuting. You were suggesting two thousand. How many parcels is that, and where is that, at the end of the?
There are the properties that extend off the pavement to the southwest that are on the lake. There's about ten properties, and that would, our recommendation to the council would be to assess them one-half of an assessment because they're not directly abutting. The roadway in front of them's not being improved, yet there's some benefit to them of having improved access to get to their properties.
Did they get notice on the improvement hearing?
They were noticed, yes.
Are they part of the thirty-seven count, or are they in addition to it?
They are.
They're part of the thirty-seven. So there's twenty-seven on the road.
So there might be, assuming we go with our recommendation on past policy, yeah, there might be twenty thousand difference there.
Because you took the thirty-seven at full.
I took it times four thousand, yeah.
Anything else? Should we turn it over to the public?
Okay. I'll step away from the podium. If you are here in the room and you'd like to come up and make your remarks, please come up to the podium and state your name and address, and we'll try to answer any questions you might have.
Hello, my name is Craig Graffender. I'm at 15520 Birch Narrows Road. I have a house that's my cabin up there. Just curious, so if someone has two hundred feet of property on the road, do they get assessed four thousand or eight thousand?
For one assessment, four thousand.
For all their property?
Yes.
Okay. Will any more property be used past the pavement? If I have trees, will they be taken out?
We're not anticipating tree removal in this property.
Okay. Because I have trees like maybe three, four feet from the actual tar, so. It's sort of ironic that I live in Minnetonka, and my house in Minnetonka, my road's getting redone there, too. They're putting brand-new, I have a road that, my house was built in nineteen forty-nine. I just have a regular road, and they're putting in curb and gutter and a brand-new road, and they're charging me zero in City Minnetonka. So, and they give me a rain garden by my mailbox, too. So I'm just curious why the City Minnetonka can charge me zero for an upgrade on their road with curb and gutter and sewer, and you're just going to do an overlay for four thousand dollars?
How much do you pay in property tax?
Same amount I pay here.
Really?
I have a house that's worth three-hundred-and-seventy thousand in Minnetonka. My property here is worth four-hundred-and-fifty thousand.
Yeah.
So I'm just curious, you know, you just built eleven million dollar city hall here, correct?
Million?
How much?
I'll go with that.
How much was it? I'm just curious. I don't know. I'm just asking. But that's ironic that my, both my projects, both my houses are having work done in front of their house, and it's charging me zero in City Minnetonka.
Yeah. Well, we're trying to keep property taxes down, so we're asking for contributions. I mean, that's kind of our policy.
Yep, I understand that. The money part of it, I can pay for it. That's not, I just understand, I don't understand the reason why I'm getting charged four thousand when in City Minnetonka, I'm getting charged zero for it. Then adding sewer and gutter and everything else.
Yeah, it's got to be coming from someplace. I don't know where it comes from.
I pay the same amount in taxes.
Dave may be able to shed some light on that.
Okay, I'm not familiar with Minnetonka's policies there, but Minnetonka is obviously a city that's greater than five thousand people. So it would be a municipal state-aid city that receives state-aid monies on an annual basis. So they may be using some of that state money to help upgrade their roads to the standards that you're speaking of. Otherwise, special assessments and road levies, utility districts that gather in tax revenues are other ways that cities help do these infrastructure upgrades.
And we don't get any of that.
No.
Right? I mean, we.
I know it's, I'm going to get charged for it. I just got a couple of questions to ask.
I'm glad I have some kind of answer for you.
I know. And the next question is, will I have any access issues into my house with the construction?
The.
For the weekends I come home.
There's going to be a period of time when you'll have to wait for construction equipment to get out of the way and that sort of thing when they're doing an operation. Usually, it doesn't last more than.
They're on weekends, correct?
They could work Saturdays, but they have to work that out with us ahead of time. No work on Sundays, no work on holidays.
Okay, I'm just curious.
Okay. That's typical in Crosslake, and we know that.
Yeah, I'm a weekend person.
We like you. We like you up here.
No, that's all I have, Brad. There's a few questions I have, so. The mailbox and stuff will be replaced somewhere in the side there. I don't have a mailbox, I think I have a sign, but that's all.
Okay.
The fire sign will be replaced, I'm guessing?
No, usually not, but what we're going after are the mailbox supports to bring those up to the city's standards. And I know that there are a lot of mailboxes out there already that have the swing-away style mailbox supports, so we'll probably leave those where they are. But those that have wooden mailbox supports, other types, those will be replaced with the swing-away style.
And they don't, the owner doesn't have a choice whether it's replaced or not? You're just going to do it?
Yep. We'll put the box onto the new support.
Okay. Thank you. Bye, everyone. Thank you, thanks a lot.
I think that's all we have.
Is it here? Anybody else on Radioland?
Open it up to the Zoom.
Hi, my name's Tom Futh, 15652 Birch Narrows. And I just, a couple of comments. You know, I understand when you have to put new roads in, but every time I've been up there, especially in the wintertime, there's virtually no traffic. You could go an hour and not see a car go by, and have you guys done a traffic study? I mean, I understand what you said, the roads lasted a good number of years, but to do nothing for another good number of years with the amount of traffic that goes by there, it's, I just can't fathom how it's going to deteriorate a whole lot worse. There's going to be pockets, and also, you know, they've just recently put fiber in, so it seems kind of inopportune that they, you know, might have to tear some of that up, too.
Okay, I can try to address those questions. So you're right, in the wintertime, the traffic loading on the roads is quite a bit different than it is in the summer. We've seen anywhere from thirty to forty percent increases in traffic seasonally, so there's peak weekends that go beyond that even. So these roads are most susceptible to traffic in the springtime, and we still have residents that live year-round that still have garbage service, in some cases, school buses. Those are the heavy axled, heavyweight axle vehicles that are typically driving on the edges of these pavements. And in the springtime, that's when we start to see the road edges broken off, and even though on an annual basis or an annual average daily traffic, it may seem low, we're still getting the loading from all the service vehicles on all of our roads.
Tom, does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. I guess the only comment I have, you know, we bet on a lot of city streets that are full of potholes and a whole lot worse. You know, we, everybody lived through the Highway three reconstruction, you know, not too long ago, and now we're talking about another summer. I just, in my opinion, and for the amount of traffic, I don't think it warrants that amount of money, but you know, that's, I just wanted to share that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Who's next?
This is Bob Van Heeky, 15658. How are you gonna, you're talking about changing the grade some on that curve and to try to get rid of the drainage, because there's been, seems like my property has taken all the drainage from all sides. What's your plan to go to the other, to the inside of the curve with the drainage, or what?
Usually, we, the road is super elevated around a curve like that, so the drainage would go to the inside of the curve, yes.
Yeah, it doesn't do that now. It goes to the outside of the curve, and I put a lot of money into a French drain, and now you're going to drain it to the other side, which is my property, too, and you're going to put a French drain on that side, too, then?
We've done that on past road projects in certain instances, yes.
What, is there a plan for that, or what?
Bob, this is Ted Strand. I think you remember me?
Yep.
This is where we were talking about, where we talked about putting another French drain on the, on the inside opposite of your property. So we'd rather water across the road and then into that French drain when we talked, we were out there talking before, so.
Well, yeah, that, and that's what I'm asking, is that going to happen? Because that's, that's my property on that side, too, you know, with the garage and stuff. And I've noticed in the past that there's a lot of water standing. It gets pretty high there, too, but if there's a French drain, at least that would take care of it.
We haven't, we haven't prepared a design at this stage of the, of the process, so what we're doing tonight is taking that input, which is very valuable from you and the rest of the residents, and should the project move forward to design, then we'll be looking at the concerns that you raised and adding a drain there, if that's the right solution.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Bob.
Hi, Mike Myers, 15304 Birch Narrows. And I just had a couple of questions.
Sure.
What, you know, I'm just curious on the quantity, you know, other roads in Crosslake similar to the ones that we're on, what other roads are older than nineteen eighty-four? In other words, where do we stack up as far as age compared to comparable roads in the Crosslake area? And then the other one was maybe a history of what assessments have been made to property owners in the past three years? What were the average assessment in the projects done? And then what are the assessments being done to the other roads in two thousand, well, the proposed assessments for twenty twenty-one? The proposed assessments for 2021?
Okay. Sure. First question, I believe there are very few roads remaining that are going back to the early 80s in terms of pavement age. There's only a handful that we could see on the list or the inventory. So this is one of the oldest pavements, paved streets in the city. As far as the assessment values that have been applied to roadway projects, the city went through a lot of road improvements from about 1998 through, right up through about 2007 or so. And typically, the assessments ranged, but they were based on the final construction cost at that time, and they were generally in the $3,000 to $4,000 range. Some were cheaper, some were more expensive. So comparatively, I'd say this is probably about right in the middle in terms of what assessment value's been used in the past. But it's... It hasn't been based necessarily on the strict definition outlined in Chapter 429 that's based on value of benefit to the property. And that's really what we've... It's been the most dramatic change in terms of the assessment policy in Crosslake is to really develop a policy that's more in tune with the state statutes and only assessing people for the benefit that they're receiving.
Okay, how about the... On the map you did originally, the other 2021 road improvements for the other streets? What are the assessments being looked at for those?
For the roadways that are being reclaimed in the same manner as Birch Narrows Road, they would also be assessed $4,000 per lot.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And then, Mike, the alternate, the overlays? Tell them what the other assessment is.
The fifth project area is the Whitefish Avenue, Hilltop Drive, Woodland Drive, and Cool Haven Lane. Those are relatively newer pavements in better condition, so we're recommending that those be overlaid with an inch and a half overlay. And the assessment on the overlay there would be $1,000 per lot.
Okay. Do you anticipate, how long would it be if these assessments, if this improvements were done, how long would it be till any significant maintenance work would be done or any new assessments?
What you should expect is a seal coat within one to two years after this project. The city has adopted that program of seal coating or chip sealing with granite chips and the oil, so that helps prolong the life of the project and pavement for their... The state research board has estimated five to six years of extended life of the pavement, so we'd... Relatively inexpensive thing to do, albeit a lot of people wonder why we're doing it right after we've got a freshly paved road. But it does make a difference, and that investment would be made. Those costs are separate from this initial project, and they're considered maintenance costs to the city. But that would be the first thing you'd see, and crack filling would be usually on a three- to four-year cycle. And as far as the next time you would see assessments, we're really shooting for something on the order of 25 years to 30 years of life cycle out of these roads, so that would probably be the next time unless something like a utility project came along that interrupted the road.
So just to clarify that a little bit, Mike, the city's policy on maintenance, which is crack sealing and crack filling and all that stuff, there is no charge for it? There's no charge to the people? It's just maintenance?
Yeah.
So...
Okay, thank you.
Just raise your hand if you'd like to say anything.
Anybody else want to say anything?
This is Cindy Johnson, 15200 Birch Narrows. I just... We don't have questions. Our family's here. We have two residences on the gravel road that comes off of Birch Narrows Road, and we've had a call with Mr. Reese earlier, and he answered all of our questions. So we just wanted to call in to see how the other neighborhood is feeling about things. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Okay. Looks like we've answered the question. Any other comment by anybody in the building, in the room?
I wondered how many calls that Dave got on Birch Narrows. He said you got a number of calls. Were they just questions about the project or were they against or for or what?
There were probably about four calls or emails I got from residents on Birch Narrows Road that were sent the notice. And at least one individual on the gravel portion of the road that was not in favor of the project. The other three, they just had questions about the project and really gave me no indication for or against, so...
So is the timeline at all? You don't have a timeline then for construction then? It's just between May and September?
Yeah. Right now, well, we will get a... Once a contractor is owned under contract, then we'll request a project schedule from the contractor.
Will we be in one of those?
Yes.
And I guess probably from the contractor's standpoint, they don't like the traffic any more than you like them there, you know? So I would think that they'd try to work around it best they can. Okay, well, I guess if there's no other comments or questions, we're going to close the assessment hearing. Thank you all for coming.